By congressional action.
Well, I'm. We're about live, so. So I'm. You are live. Well, good evening, everybody. It is Monday, July 20th, 2020, in this meeting of Troy City Council. Mr. Schwizer is not here this evening. He was on tap to give him a pledge. So I will go ahead and do that. If we can please rise for the invocation. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this beautiful day. And Lord, we are grateful for the people that you've brought here together virtually to talk about our community. Lord, we are grateful for everyone in our community as we are all striving to do the best that we can to take care of those that are around us. Lord, give us the responsibility to help love the least and the last and the lost among us, Lord. Thank you for all the blessings that our police and our firefighters and our frontline folks give to our community each and every day. We are blessed to be a blessing to others, Lord. Help us never forget that. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell.
Here.
Mr. Twilliger.
Here.
Mrs. Sne.
Here.
Mr. Twist.
Here.
Mr. Seaver.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Bobby's on mute. He's muted.
Muted.
Here.
Mr. Schilling.
Here.
Mr. Schwizer. Mr. Allen.
Members, can we please have a motion to excuse Mr. Allen?
So moved. Use.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to excuse Mr. Allen. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Sne.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Your Alan is excused.
Motion to excuse Mr. Schwizer.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips to excuse Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mrs. Sne. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Sne.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Schwizer is excused.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read a summary of the minutes of the July 6, 2020, meeting of Troy City Council?
Minutes of council, July 6, 2020. A public hearing was held on ordinance number O-342020. A rezoning of a parcel at 1375 South Union Street. A public hearing was held on resolution number R-432020, the tax budget. Committee reports. Community and economic development committee recommended that ordinance number O-312020, a rezoning at 6 North Madison, be approved. Resolution number R-432020, adopting fiscal budget was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance number O-312020, a rezoning was given third reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-342020, a rezoning was given second reading. Following various comments, council adjourned at 7:25 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Counsel, how do we wish to dispose of the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips to approve the minutes, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Sne.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to committee reports, we have a lot of committee reports tonight. I will begin with a report from the committee of the whole. Council met as a committee of the whole on July 13th to discuss holding council meetings in person at the Bravo Room of Hobart Arena to meet the social distancing procedures established as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. It is the recommendation of council as a committee of the whole that legislation be prepared, amending codified ordinance section 111.01 to add a provision allowing for an alternate location to hold public meetings during a state of emergency declared by the city of Troy, subject to public notice. So that council can commence meeting in person for the August 3 meeting, we support emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted, Zachary Allen, Bobby Phillips, William Rozell, Jeffrey Schilling, John Schwizer, Todd Seaver, Lynn Sne, John Twilliger, and William Twist. Are there any comments or questions on the report from the committee of the whole? Seeing none, we will move to the Buildings and Utilities Committee, who has two reports tonight, and filling in for Mr. Allen will be Mr. Twilliger. Mr. Twilliger, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. On July 13th, this committee met remotely to consider recommendation approval of a professional service agreement with the firm of Strand Associates for design of a kidder ditch improvement project. A stormwater master plan completed in December of 2017 identified the multiple segments of the kidder ditch as priority areas for storm system improvements. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into a professional service agreement with Strand Associates of Cincinnati, Ohio, for the design of the kidder ditch drainage study and improvement projects at a cost not to exceed $379,900. This is respectfully submitted by John Twilliger, William Twist, and Chair Zach Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Twilliger. Do council members have any questions on this report? Seeing none, Mr. Twilliger, please go ahead with your second report.
Thank you. On July 13th, this committee met remotely to consider recommendations and extension to an agreement for electric generation and transmission supply for city facilities. The current agreement runs through May of 2021. However, the parties to this agreement have an opportunity to extend the agreement through May of 2024 based on the current very low kilowatt hour rate. Continuing this agreement has an estimated savings to Troy of approximately $130,000 over the agreement extension period. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute an amendment to the agreement for electric generation and transmission supply services for city facilities that will extend the agreement through May of 2024. Based on the timeframe to accomplish this extension, the committee supports emergency legislation, and this is respectfully submitted by myself, John Twilliger, William Twist, and Chairperson Zach Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Twilliger. Do council members have any questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll move to the Community and Economic Development Committee with Mrs. Sne for the next report. Mrs. Sne, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The Community and Economic Development Committee met remotely on July 13th to review the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that parcel number DO-8106648, located at 1375 South Union Street, be rezoned from I-2 to M-3. This committee supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission regarding this proposed rezoning and recommends that council adopt ordinance number O-342020. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Sne. Do any council members have any questions on the report? Moving on to the Recreation and Parks Committee with Mr. Schilling. Mr. Schilling, the floor is yours for your report.
Thank you. This committee met on July 13th regarding the recommendations of the Board of Park Commissioners that certain parcels be declared as surplus and offered for sale. The recommendations were forwarded in accordance with the new policy guidelines, reapproval of declaring a surplus city board of park commissioners property. This committee supports the recommendations of the Board of Park Commissioners and recommends that legislation be prepared declaring a surplus and serving no public purpose, Waco Park, and a three-sided parcel of approximately 73 feet by 81 feet by 38 feet to the rear of 700 Governor's Road, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to offer such parcels for sale. This was respectfully submitted by Mr. Bobby Phillips, Mr. John Twilliger, and myself, Jeff Schilling as chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Do any council members have any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we will go to the Streets and Sidewalks Committee with Mr. Phillips. Mr. Phillips, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. This committee met on July 13th to consider consenting to ODOT maintaining a culvert under I-75 within Troy's corporate boundary at no cost to the city. And it was a recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared to do the consenting to an ODOT project that include the maintenance of a culvert under I-75. Based on the format provided by ODOT, this would be emergency legislation, and this was respectfully submitted by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Sne, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Do any council members have any questions or comments on this report? Our final report of this evening is an oral report from the Personnel Committee and Mr. Twist. Mr. Twist, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that the following be reappointed to the City Beautification Committee for new terms commencing July 1st, 2020 through June 30th of 2022. And those people would be Gareth Johnston, Pam Dalton, Rosaleen Raymond, Deborah Cappers, Carol McCarthy, and Bill Miller for the Beautification Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Do I have a second?
So moved.
It has been moved by Mr. Twist and seconded by Mr. Phillips to approve the individuals noted for service on the City Beautification Committee. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight, and we congratulate the members of the committee. Moving on to resolutions, Mrs. Knight, will you please read resolution R-442020?
Resolution number R-442020. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement for professional services with Strand Associates, Inc., of Cincinnati, Ohio, to provide design services for the kidder ditch improvement project, cost not to exceed $379,900. First reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. How does council wish to move on the item?
Moves to suspend.
Second. It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schilling and seconded by Mr. Twilliger. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips? Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been suspended. How do we wish to move?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Sne to adopt the resolution, seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions on the resolution? Seeing none, Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read resolution R-452020?
Resolution number R-452020, a resolution authorizing consent and cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the maintenance of a culvert under Interstate 75 within the right-of-way of the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. ODOT will maintain this culvert at no cost to the city. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Rozell to suspend the three reading rule, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Twilliger, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Are there any final comments or questions on the resolution? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read resolution R-462020?
Resolution number R-462020. Resolution the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into a generation supply agreement amendment for electric generation supply for city facilities and declaring an emergency. This will extend the current rates through May of 2024. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second. Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mrs. Sne, seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions on the resolution? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to ordinances, will you please read ordinance O-342020?
Ordinance number O-342020, an ordinance changing the zoning of parcel number DO-8106648 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the zoning classification of I-2 General Industrial District to the city zoning of M-3 General Industrial District. This is located at 1375 South Union Street, has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission, is third reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight.
Adopt.
Again.
It has been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mrs. Sne. Are there any final comments or questions from council members? Seeing none, Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yeah, sorry, someone sneezed, I think, and I missed my name.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read resolution O-352020?
Ordinance number O-352020, an ordinance amending section 111.01 of the codified ordinances of the city of Troy, Ohio, regarding meeting time and place of city council meetings and declaring an emergency. This allows an alternate location to be set during a state of emergency. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Bobby's muted again.
Muted again.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Three reading rule has been suspended?
Move kidnapped.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Are there any final comments or questions on the ordinance? Seeing none, Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read resolution O-362020?
Ordinance number O-362020, ordinance declaring municipally-owned real property is no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorizing the sale of such excess property. This is two lots known as Waco Park at 1410 Waco Street. First reading.
Counsel, how do we wish to move?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twilliger, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mrs. Sne, seconded by Mr. Seaver. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read resolution O-372020?
Ordinance number O-372020, an ordinance changing the zoning of Inlet 11368 in the city of Troy, Ohio, in the Miima County zoning classification of A-2 General Agricultural District to a city of Troy Plan Development Residential. This will be a subject of a public hearing at the next council meeting, has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission, first reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. This will stand as the first reading, and we'll go to a second reading at our next meeting. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O-382020?
Ordinance number O-382020, an ordinance creating designated outdoor refreshment area, known as the downtown Troy Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area, and enacting regulation. This is known as the DORA. This also has a public hearing at the next meeting, and this is the first reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. This will stand as the first reading, and we will hold that over for future reading due to the public hearing at our next meeting. Moving on to communications and announcements. Mayor Robin Oda, do you have anything to share?
Just a thank you to ladies on the beautification committee for accepting another term. We're loving the flowers and everything downtown. They've done a great job. And just a reminder that the second HRC meeting will be this Thursday, and another organizational meeting, but another step into some committees and what we'll be talking about. Looking forward to that.
Thank you, Mayor. Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Tedrington, do you have any comments?
Just to make sure that everybody saw their email that included a revised copy of the DORA application. It shows a new map boundary that is narrower, encompass approximately half the acreage that we talked about last week. It reduces the amount of signage, trash, and again acreage in any kind of, I won't say encroachment, but ballooning, especially on the south side. So it's much narrower and we think more manageable, at least at the start, reminding everybody that those boundaries and any of the regulations of the DORA can be changed at any time by action of council. That is all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Tedrington. We see Grant Kerber, Director of Law, is on our call tonight. Does Mr. Kerber have anything that he'd like to add for the proceedings this evening?
I do not. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. No.
You're welcome. Good to see you again, Grant. Mr. Frigga, our auditor, is not here. Do any council members have any comments that they would like to add to see? Mr. Rozell, the floor is yours.
I have one question, maybe a question, and then maybe a request. I don't know if everybody got a chance to read. We did have input on the DORA from Marcy Younts. Is there any problem with someone reading those comments?
I was. I was planning on doing that at the point of the meeting. It said reading of citizen comments.
Okay. And then on our activity schedule, it's still highlighted that the mayor statue, the conversation with Mrs. Jenkins the other day, the committee has decided to postpone that. Is that correct? They haven't talked to you yet?
No.
Okay. But they're going to do that.
All right.
And I forgot the other one. So I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Any other council members have anything that they would like to add this evening? Seeing none, we will move into staff comments. I don't know if Chris has anything to add. I'm not seeing them unmute themselves. We did receive three comments via email in regards to the DORA, and I would like to read those right now. This comment from Marcy Younts was submitted on July 17th. "I saw the notice that was published inviting citizens to submit our comments to you regarding the DORA. I have written my personal thoughts only through my life experiences instead of thinking in the moment of today's decisions. I do believe that it's a bad example to children and teens with adults walking around in plain view of children, laughing and drinking alcohol and socializing. This would be a message to the next generation that alcohol is okay until parents hear the sirens of an ambulance or hear the sound of the care flight helicopter flying over late at night and wonder if it is their teenager in a drinking and driving car accident. The decision of the people and officials of Troy is one of self versus sacrifice. To give up something that they love, drinking, versus to teach and protect our children from harm, future drinking. I could see both sides of the crossroads because I wasn't a Christian until I was a young adult.[1701.72] I wasn't a Christian until I was a young adult. I can remember being lost in the world and having different views about drinking than I have now. Beer was in our refrigerator when I was growing up. I actually remember thinking it was a special privilege to be old enough to have one. The beautiful testimony is now that the Lord found me and has given me His word to read. I can have conversations with my family about the danger of drinking, and when my adult grandchildren and I have our Jesus talks, they ask me why I don't drink. I always tell them, because I love you more than I love beer, or I love you more than I love frozen margaritas. Their eyes look at mine and they truly see how my love for them is a priority above other pleasures, and that I have chosen to love them way above the world, and that my love for them is a deep personal love of sacrifice, and that I do not want to take a chance in influencing them to do wrong that may lead them, may lead, lead to them getting hurt. I would never forgive myself if I lived as an example that drinking is okay, and then drinking would become an addiction for someone. I want my words to ring in the hearts of my children and grandchildren when they have to explain why not to drink alcohol when they talk to their children someday. Two of my close family members in the year passed were near-death car accidents due to drinking alcohol. Alcohol can also cause the death of a marriage or a career, et cetera. My decision to not drink is not only to drinking alcohol. I'm sorry. My decision to not drink is not only because of God's warnings, but is also because God placed in a, placed a love in my heart for what is most important in my life. Thank you for reading my thoughts. Sincerely, Marcy Younts." A second comment we received from Barb Parry. "This was submitted on Monday, July 20th. I have bad health and won't be able to attend the meeting regarding DORA, so I just want to put in my two cents. I am against the adoption of the ordinance to approve the application. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. God bless. Barbara Parry." The third and final comment is from Kelly Snyder. This was received on Monday, July 13th. "Dear Troy City Council members, I am writing as the Executive Director of the Troy Rec, located in downtown Troy at 11 North Market Street. I am writing today to voice my concern about the proposed designated outdoor refreshment area. As most of you know, the Troy Rec is a community recreation center with a primary emphasis on youth. In particular, we serve a majority of at-risk, low-income, and minority students. My concern stems from the opportunity that the DORA will present to the, for the youth to have ready access to alcoholic beverages that careless adults will leave behind in their cups. I've watched the video that Troy Main Street included with their survey. I have visited the websites of other Ohio cities that have approved a DORA, and I've answered the survey from Troy Main Street, expressing these same concerns. I feel fairly certain that I understand how the DORA works. I don't believe those municipalities that have the proximity to schools and a youth rec center that we have in Troy. We've seen teens pick cigarette butts up off the sidewalk and smoke them, so I have no doubt in my mind, given the opportunity, they will drink whatever leftover alcohol they find. A secondary concern is that they have, is that after they drink the alcohol, they will come to the rec intoxicated, possibly sick, and then my staff, staff will have to deal with the aftermath, calling the police, calling parents, cleaning up their mess, et cetera. I am not fundamentally opposed to alcohol at special events downtown, as there's a designated group that cleans up after. Examples of Troy Main Street, Troy Chamber Commerce, or the City of Troy. But with the DORA, there doesn't seem to be that same oversight. I know our kids, and I know the hardships they face, and the families they come from. I believe the DORA will open up too many opportunities to entice our kids to make bad decisions. Here are a few questions I have. How do you ensure half-empty cups of alcohol will be disposed of in a quick and responsible way? More trash cans is not an answer, as adults will leave cups outside of business. Who will be walking around cleaning up the cups at midnight or whatever time is established for the DORA? What actual benefit is there for downtown businesses, and does that benefit outweigh the possible detriment to our youth who will drink alcohol that is left sitting around? Thank you for allowing me to express my concerns, and I will be attending all, any and all council meetings and hearings related to this topic. I'm happy to discuss my concerns further with any member of council. Sincerely, Kelly Snyder." Those are the three comments that we have received in regards to this issue.
Mr. President.
Mr. Phillips, you are recognized.
There, there was an additional one, and I think I may have sent that a little late to Mrs. Knight from Rosemary Jones that I have in front of me here, if I might be able to read that.
Mr. Phillips, go right ahead.
Thank you. It's from Rosemary Jones, and she says, "I am writing to register my objection to the downtown alcohol project DORA. I just don't see what is so important about alcohol. I have a margarita or wine occasionally, but do not see it as essential for the downtown. I would hate for Troy to be demeaned in reputation for adding this to alcohol at our festivals and our concerts on the levee. It's like we can't have a good time without it. Why add to any other problems that in this time could arise from it? Why add to the police issues?" And she says, "Thanks for listening, Rosemary Jones."
Thank you, Mr. Phillips, and thank you, Mrs. Jones, for those comments.
Mr. What?
Mr. Seaver, go ahead.
I just have a question. Just for a point of clarification, this initiative was brought by, I believe, Troy Main Street. I assume we've invited them to the public hearing. I know we had the Tim Davis presentation of what a DORA was, but are they going to, do we anticipate that they'll be presenting their rationale? Because I, I think that would be very important for the public to hear as to how they perceive this being implemented and what their process is. So do you know, have they been invited to discuss this with us on the April 3rd public hearing?
August.
Mr. Tedrington? Sorry, August. Sorry.
Yes, they have been.
Do you know if they plan to attend?
Yes, she does.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing no questions, we will adjourn this meeting of Troy City Council. I can't wait to see all of you in person, August 3rd, at the Bravo Room at Oberderyn. Meeting adjourned. We meeting tomorrow?